Good evening and welcome to the twice monthly meeting of Westminster's mayor and common council. During the public health crisis, we will be conducting our meetings remotely. And they will be available and streamed live on the city's Facebook page as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. We'll begin as we do every meeting with the pledge to the flag, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. Now, before we go any further this evening, we're going to do something a little different. And without objection, we are going to add an item to the agenda upfront. We have a resolution we would like to consider before we do anything else this evening. And I'm going to go to Mr. Cavaci to introduce the subject. Mr. Cavaci.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resol- can you hear me okay?
We can.
Am I, uh, am I on?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you.
I don't think you can hear us.
You're frozen, but we can hear you.
No, he's done now. Something happened. Maybe we'll have to come back to that.
Well, yeah, maybe we will have to. Well, when Mr. Cavaci comes back online, we'll, we'll go to that. So we'll, without objection, we'll take it up when Mr. Cavaci rejoins us. In the meantime.
Out of order.
Yeah, he's logged out. In the meantime, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have minutes this evening from the special meeting of the mayor and council on October 7th, the mayor and council meeting of October 12th, and the closed meeting of the same evening. Without objection, we'll consider those minutes approved as submitted. And now, Mr. Cavaci, are you back?
I am. I don't know what happened. As soon as I started to speak, it locked up. Can you hear me okay now?
That's it. Please go ahead. Yes.
Okay, so I have a resolution from the entire council. This resolution is regarding, well, you know what? I'm just gonna read it instead of giving it any preamble. I think it'll be better just to read it. So this is resolution number 20-11, thanking Mayor Joe Dominic for his work on enhancing the city of Westminster's website. Whereas the city of Westminster's website is an integral part of how the city government communicates information to the Westminster community. And whereas a longstanding goal of the mayor and common council has been to update the city's website to enhance its visual appearance and to improve its navigability so that website users could more easily find content. And whereas Mayor Joe Dominic owns a digital marketing company that among other things specializes in website design and development. And whereas Mayor Dominic graciously offered his technical expertise and the resources of his firm to undertake the long-desired overhaul of the city website. And whereas Mayor Dominic and his firm have devoted considerable hours to date to create a new design and user interface for the city website and will now dedicate even more resources working with staff members to improve the content of the website. And whereas Mayor Dominic and his firm have performed this work on a pro bono basis, saving Westminster taxpayers the cost of upgrading the city website. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the common council of the city of Westminster, Maryland hereby extends its sincere appreciation to Mayor Joe Dominic for his leadership in enhancing the appearance and value of the city of Westminster website as a resource of information for the Westminster community. Be it further resolved that the common council of the city of Westminster, Maryland thanks Mayor Joe Dominic for graciously offering to serve the services of his firm to accomplish the upgrade of the city website at no cost to Westminster taxpayers. You know, Mr. President, I, I know I speak for all of us, obviously, since we all, you know, signed off on this resolution. There is no small amount of money that the mayor and his firm saved the city. And I know we're all very grateful for it. I think it looks awesome. It's a huge improvement. And I know we're all grateful. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci, and extend my, my thanks to the mayor as well. Anybody else like to comment on this? All right, in that case, now, Mr. Mayor, you can't say anything until we're finished. So without objection, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the resolution is adopted. And the mayor has our thanks. Mr. Mayor, you wanted to say something?
I would just like to tell the council that I really appreciate it, but I hope this is the last time there's a surprise resolution that I don't know about.
We promised there'll only be good surprises, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thanks again for, for all the good work. It really does look terrific, and we appreciate everybody's work on it. Move on now. We have, this evening, we have a two-part presentation. It's our quarterly update on the Westminster Fiber Network from the staff as well as from our partners at Ting. And so we will start off with the city part of the update with Ms. Matthews.
Thank you. Included in your agenda packet is information on the quarterly financial report on the fiber fund as well as take rates. I won't steal Ms. Jivanyoni's thunder. If you have any questions about the financial data included in the agenda packet, either Ms. Colston or I would be happy to answer any questions you have. I'd like to maybe turn it over to Mr. Dick to see if he'd like to comment on, report on our network maintenance and installation activities.
Yes, Mayor, common council. With the pandemic going on, we did see some higher-than-average intakes coming in. In the past three months, we have done 98 server ops, which came through our 311 program. We also had several that were already installed drops that needed to be turned on for service. We also performed 88 field checks, which some of those would have been those drops that were already installed. Additionally, our maintenance team undertook even more new construction out in the Stonegate Development, getting most of that infrastructure in there. And so as they build out, we can continually bring the new houses on one line. I'd say right now, we probably have about a good 75% of our structure built in the ground out at Stonegate. So we're looking for that to continue on for a little, for at least another two years. Rather than that, we've been doing site surveys for FiberPass for different things, including what was announced at the last council meeting. We have started taking that underway as well by buying places right outside the city limits to bring one to the network. And that's about all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. Ms. Matthews, anything else? I'm sorry, you're muted, Ms. Matthews.
I said not from staff unless there's any questions that you all have.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions from Ms. Matthews or Mr. Dick? All right, great. Then we will move on to the Ting portion of our report. Ms. Jivanyoni, we're pleased to see you again. Thanks for coming on.
Awesome. Thanks for having me. Let me get the presentation up here. All right, you guys can see my Westminster update screen, I hope?
We can.
Awesome. All right, so let's do a recap of July, August, and September. We will go over the phase recap, talk about new plans. I have an update on streaming TV. We'll do a marketing review, and then, of course, I'll take questions. And clearly, I can't count because there's three in there twice, but we'll, we'll get through it. All right, phase recap. We had a great quarter. And, you know, when I reflect upon the success that we've had, it's sometimes bittersweet to think about it. But I'm proud that in the pandemic that we're facing, we are able to offer people a service that allows the experience to be more productive for them. We have definitely seen growth as a result of people being stuck at home, whether it be for school or for work. And it, it has been a good quarter. And also one where we've received a lot of thanks as well. You know, we've, we've had, I've had parents call me crying because they find my cell phone somewhere and say, oh, my gosh, I had no idea. This is horrible. Please help. And, you know, for whatever reason, now was the time and happy to help. And now, you know, I'm hearing a lot of, gosh, I wish I would have done this a long time ago. Happy that we have been able to, you know, help and, and, you know, the foresight of the city to build the fiber network, knowing that we needed to be prepared for the future. I don't think anyone could have predicted that a pandemic was in the future, but we were ready. And we were able to help lots of people through this tough time. And that's been, that's been, you know, it's been a silver lining for me of everything that we're going through. Okay, so before I move to the next slide, I do want to say we made an exciting announcement this quarter. And that is that we have changed our plans that we have available to our residential customers. You know, we pride ourselves on the gigabit being the premier product. It is the internet for the future. It is the fastest internet available in town. But it's not, it's not what everybody needs. And we've heard Westminster saying that for five years now. And so after some testing and some, some surveys, we decided to give it, give it a shot and roll out some different products. So what we have done is we have re-leveled our availability. We still have the Home Fiber 1000. That's the typical $89 a month product. And we focus with that product on the fact that you can stream 4K content. You can game and connect on all the devices in your home. This is the product where if you are an internet hogging family, this is the product that you want. For some, whether it be the price point or the reality that, you know, I hear a lot of people say, I don't need a gigabit. It's just too much. And, and you know what? None of us truly use the full gigabit all the time. But again, it's for that forward-thinking it so that we can grow into our internet usage. And so we have come introduced the Home Fiber 200. You know, we've had a lot of people say, well, we're something more in between because at the time, our former 10-10 package, they were smart enough to know that that wasn't, just wasn't quite enough for them. So the Home Fiber 200 is offered at a $69 price point, and it's to stream, browse, and connect on several devices at the same time. Definitely adequate for an internet-using family, but not one who hogs, if you will, like the gigabit users. And then we have the Home Fiber 50, and this replaced the 10-10 product. You know, 10-10 was never anything that we imagined to be quite as, as popular as it actually was. But as popular as it was, people were saying, you know, gosh, we wish it was just a little bit faster. And so we've upped that 10-10 to a Home Fiber 50. Again, all these packages are symmetrical for $39 a month. And it will be good for streaming, browsing, connecting on a few devices. You know, the power and the beauty of a reliable fiber connection, three different price points, three different plans and speeds to meet each family's needs. And so we soft-launched this back at the end of July. We have been, you know, working on getting the word out. We really launched it as of October. And we're seeing, you know, subscribers look at some other plan options. I will say the gigabit is still what the grand majority of our customers want. It's an awesome product for an amazing price. But for the people who want something different, we now have that option. And so that's been a nice, a nice addition to our products. Streaming TV. So if you reflect back to our last council presentation, I explained that we had decided to close down our Ting TV product. We were disconnecting the customers that we had. We were selling the equipment. It was just, we had recognized that this is not the kind of TV experience that consumers are looking for. And there has been more and more cutting of the cord, if you will, that has led to people, us deciding as a company to move away from a typical cable product. And what we recognize is that there's some pretty awesome stuff out there. And so we took, took the opportunity to think about what makes Ting special in this case? What is it that we have to offer? And the reality is, we have to offer awesome internet. And so with streaming TV, your experience is just that. It's totally awesome. It's, it is seamless because you have a good internet connection. So what we have done is decided to recommend to our customers that they upgrade to streaming TV. So from Ting, you can get, obviously, our internet. And we say with video, there should be no buffering and no unexpected pauses. In addition, as a part of the onboarding process, when a new customer goes to order, they can purchase or rent streaming devices from us. So we are now selling or renting the Apple TV, and we're selling the Fire TV stick. And these are the devices that give people access to the live TV options, the Netflix and such. What we do in the ordering process is we give referral links. We have chosen to recommend YouTube TV and Sling. And so at the process where you're going through, if you choose that you want a referral, it really truly sends you an email that gives you the steps on how to sign up with YouTube or Sling, and that is a billed by vendor. So it's more of a partnership. It's giving people a stronger opportunity for that video product. It's not something that we are selling or, or profiting from. Again, I said, we've got these streaming devices. You can buy an Apple TV from us for $179, or you can rent it for $9 a month. And then you can buy the Amazon Fire Stick for $49. Both of these devices give you any of those TV options, video options that are available there in the center. You know, there are good options out there. I can tell you, in my home, we've been using YouTube TV for quite some time now. It gets us truly everything that we need. The latest update made my children really happy because they brought in the Paramount suite, so the different Nickelodeons. And believe it or not, we got like MTV and CMT, and I am so surprised that CMT still plays music videos. That was a delightful new piece of information I got. But anyway, great channels. They've got the add-ons for the special things that you need. And again, a great product. You know, YouTube TV is backed by Google, and so it's got lots of money behind it. It's got a great research team, and they're really making a product that's worthwhile. YouTube TV, I was just talking about, it really is everything you would expect from cable TV. It has all your local channels and an unlimited DVR, which is pretty insane. You get 85-plus channels for $65 a month, and again, billed from YouTube TV. The nice thing about YouTube TV for everyone who's, who's watching at home, be you a Ting customer or not, it has all the live locals. So our four affiliates out of Baltimore are present in YouTube TV, and that is great. Unfortunately, the only thing it doesn't have around here is Masson. I know that's frustrating. You know, we have lots of phone calls with Google to talk to them about YouTube TV, and we've let them know that, you know, Masson is something for both us and our Charlottesville markets, actually, that would, you know, is, is of interest. We're hopeful someday that that comes that way. Sling, on the other hand, 30 channels for $30 a month. It's got a great selection, but it doesn't have those live locals. So if that's important to you, Sling is not the best option. But two great options to get you so many of the channels that we love to watch at home. Okay, marketing review. So back in July, I told you, we did some testing. We sent a direct mail postcard, 820 addresses in Phase 4. It was one of the later phases that was open, that was released, if you will, that, that the city built and we'd been marketing to. And so we chose that to test a different price point. We tested $79 gig for a year, just to see if that 79 was, was a draw. We learned that 79 wasn't quite different enough from 89, which is why we picked a $69 price point for our middle tier. But it was a good way to research. For those of you who recognize the person in the picture, that's Barbie B. She was one of our very first customers at her business, at her place of employment in the airport. She was so excited to have it at home. So she's a home and work customer and a real Ting advocate for sure. And so we were happy to have her giving her quote, which I think is something that, you know, we really felt this pandemic period. And that is that Ting gives you a peace of mind. You no longer have to worry about your internet connection, and that's something that, that, that we have experienced and that she has, she has stated. In August, we did a partnership promo. We partnered with Shepherd Staff simply in that we said to them, you know, can, are you comfortable with us putting you on all of our marketing materials? We'd like to offer customers a $25 Target gift card, and we'd like for back-to-school supplies. And we'd like to tell them that we'll also donate $25 to the back-to-school efforts for the Shepherd Staff. So we did a direct mail postcard. It was adorable. It was actually, if you're looking at the, the right-hand picture, it folded in half, kind of like a composition book. And when you opened it up, there was the, there was all the information, and then it mailed that way. I think we have some pretty creative designers and some really fun designers, and I think this is one of my favorite pieces I've seen yet. But this one blew it out of the park. We just made a really lovely donation to Shepherd Staff. And, you know, this was one of those times where we were getting people ready for school, and it felt like we were, we were, you know, doing very well, but for a good reason, because parents knew they were going back to school virtually, and it was time to make sure their internet connection was going to be stable and reliable. In September, we really started working on the marketing for our three new packages. Again, those designers I was talking about love this billboard. So this billboard is in two places for the month of October. Because of our Carol Magazine ad that we placed, we got the, the electronic billboard in front of sheets as you leave town. And through the Chamber of Commerce, we've done the Billboard Co-op for six months. This is our last and final month. And that's the billboard down by the Dunkin' Donuts in Finksburg, across from the old Finksburg Post Office. And I just love the billboard that they put together. Obviously, it needs something quick that just takes note for them to go home and look. But, you know, leave the speeding to us now, offering three speeds. I, I just love it. We, you know, we tried to look at some new places. The Carol Magazine publishes a new movers guide. And so we took a family who talked about, you know, we bought this house because of Ting. That's the promotion there on the far right. And then we've put an ad in the new movers guide for a year. Yes, it goes to all of Carroll County, but, you know, we made sure it said City of Westminster. And obviously, there may be some opportunity for some people just outside of the, the city with our latest news. But trying to get people, you know, really come and think about, if somebody is new to town or somebody's moving, if they don't really know, how will they know? You know, I've said this before, Comcast is a name that everyone recognizes, and, and that's, that's okay. There is no Ting Stadium that is broadcasting football. So we do have Ting Park in Holly Springs for the minor baseball team, but I digress. So anyway, we have that in the new movers guide. We also, you know, we are really proud of our relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. Mike McMullen has always been a great advocate for us, and the Chamber, the Chamber membership has been a great benefit to our growth. And so we offer our best promos to Chamber members. And so we, we launched the new Chamber member offer, and that went out. And then just something fun, trying to grow our Instagram following and also give some people some feel-good. We upgraded our Ting Welcome Kit mug at some point this year, and it's this awesome stainless steel travel mug that you see in a couple of those pictures. And so every week, we go around and to different customers, to different things around, and take a picture of the mug somewhere. And so just been a little way to have fun and add some entertainment to, to everything going on. And the other thing in September, we did a, a national contest for show, we called it Show Off. So all of our markets did a show-off, and this one, we were hashtag Show Off Westminster. Example, Charlottesville was Show Off, Charlotte, or Seville. But we partnered with the Carol Arts Council. They helped us to promote this. And there were four hashtags. I think it was food, view, pets, and food, that people could submit their picture, and then it was voted upon. This screenshot was when we had just seven entries. There were several more than that by the time it closed. And if you go to our Facebook page right now, you can see the finalists and vote on the finals. I don't believe that's finished yet, though grand prize winner is going to win a, oh, my gosh, I'm gonna say this wrong, but someone will correct me, I'm sure, DSLR camera, $700 value. And then the runners-up are going to get Shutterfly gift cards to hopefully print out their, their pictures. And that's it. Very good. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from Ms. Jivanyoni? All right. Well, thanks very much. Appreciate all the information, particularly about the new packages. We're excited that we're going to be able to work, work with you to start marketing the service outside of the city limits. And we think that's going to be terrific for both the fiber network and for Ting. So we're looking forward to that. And we will look forward to seeing you again in a couple of months.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on now to the consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar this evening. May I have a motion?
I'll move to approve, Mr. President.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Mr. Cavaci to approve the consent calendar. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved. And now we'll go on to the report from the mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, we, we had a very unfortunate incident in city Westminster in the last couple of days. I won't speak in detail about it. I'll leave that up to the Public Safety Committee and our chief of police, whether or not they want to mention anything and how much they want to talk about. But I, I didn't, I didn't want to go through my mayor's comments without mentioning it. And on a totally different direction, yes, to wind down on my sales of the website a little bit. I was gonna make the big announcement that it launched during the mayor's comments. So just another passive aggressive thank you from you on that. But it was, it, it, it launched, you know, a few days ago, launched in the last week. And it's really just the design build that launched. A lot of the content's still the same. Just so everyone understands the, what that means is, what launched is really the improvements to not just the design and the, the visual appeal of it, but made a lot of attempts to make it easier to use and easier to find things. We looked, you know, looked at analytics and saw that really what people come to our website for are to pay bills, to find out what's going on with trash pickup when there's a holiday, or if they're new to town, they want to find out, you know, when. Or, or maybe they just, you know, they're starting to put out yard waste for the first time, and they don't know when that is. And then the rest of it, for the most part, really was, was partial wreck. You know, people are looking for events. When we, when we have events, they were looking for information on summer camp, the pool, the gym, all those things that had dates and times and places. So if you, if you notice the layout of the site, all of those things were made to be kind of right in your face without having to look, look through a whole lot. And we also, we're gonna feature, you know, our fiber network a little more on the site and set up for that, too. But the content, some of the linking, still not updated. I will be working with Sam Partry on that. She, she's going to be, you know, helping me reach out to our directors and to, you know, find out what's old, what needs to be on there, to make some changes and so forth. And then we're gonna work with Ting on making it really seamless in one click from our website to be able to go and sign up for service there. That's it. I didn't want to say a whole lot about it. I just wanted to let everyone know kind of the, you know, it's not just, you know, just to, to look better. It's to, to actually perform better and provide a better service. And some, you know, some of the people that contributed to the, to the art for the site. Most of us know Kelly Heck. She's, uh, some of the photos we use come from, come from her. She takes great photos. A lot of, she already had a lot of photos of our parks. And then she, her husband, Adam Stoltz, did the video on the homepage. So that's it. That's all I got. I just wanted to, to, to announce, you know, some of the thoughts behind the design. So hopefully, our, our- So hopefully our our residents and people outside the city find it a little easier to navigate and find what they need. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. And now we'll move on to the reports from the council standing committees. We'll start and and also the liaisons. We'll start as we always do with the Arts Council report and that's Mr. Dayhoff.
And there'll be no report this this meeting, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Mr. Yingling, Economic and Community Development.
No report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yingling. Nothing from the Finance Committee this evening. Personnel Committee, Ms. Gilbert. You're muted, but it looked like you said that you didn't have a report.
Nothing from us either.
All right, very good. Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Cavaci.
Yeah, Mr. President, I do have a few things. As the mayor alluded to, we did have a homicide in the city over the weekend. It's the first one we've had in three years. We don't have very many, which is 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 a good thing, but it's unfortunate whenever we do. There's strong evidence that there's no risk at all to the community. It was, there's evidence that, you know, the parties were known to each other potentially. So there isn't, there shouldn't be any alarm or concern on on the part of the community in general. But it's, again, very unfortunate and the police are working very hard on the case. That's that's all I can say on that subject at this point. Also, over the weekend, the Western Police Department apprehended a couple of individuals that were involved in a regional theft ring that's been operating in the region. And due to the good, hard work of of our police department, we were able to make a number of apprehensions that are sure to, you know, help cut down on crime, not only in our area, but probably a number of other areas as well. And that's not the first time the PD has done that. There have been a couple of cases where they've been able to crack cases here in Westminster that other communities have not been able to do. So again, kudos. Thank you very much for your great work there. And then lastly, on a positive note, the police department is starting its ABLE training this week. And I know I spoke about that a couple of meetings ago, but that's related to, you know, teaching officers techniques and skills related to de-escalation and, you know, how to how to deal with difficult situations in a, in a, you know, a good, positive way. So it's a, we're starting out with a couple of, couple of members are training and then they will, you know, train the trainer. They will go to training, they'll come back and then train the entire departments. The intention is is for every member of the police department to receive this training, which we think is timely and important. So that's my entire report, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Cavaci. Public Works Committee, Mr. Yingling, anything on that?
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. And finally, Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dayhoff. I see we had another great event. I'm sure Ms. Gruber will tell us about it later, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to take away from Ms. Gruber's thunder. The square, the squarecrows are awesome and we're looking forward to a great event coming up with the the reverse miracle on Ma, on on Main Street event. But let's, 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 let's have, let's have Abby take all the, all the attention for that.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Move on now to council comments and discussion. If anybody has anything that they weren't able to include in the committee report, we can take that up now. And Mr. Cavaci, anything? addition, Mr. Dayhoff.
No, sir.
All right, Ms. Gilbert. All right, and Ms. Ye, Mr. Yingling.
No, no, Mr. President.
All right, very good. Thank you all very much for that. I I skipped over unfortunately the the COVID-19 pandemic update. I think we do have a couple of items this evening to share with you all. Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, President Pecoraro. I wanted to share with the mayor and common counsel that on October 6th, a member of the county staff reached out to me to see if Westminster had any additional needs for which we wanted to apply for funding under the county's coronavirus relief fund plan. As you may recall, we previously submitted expenses in the range of about $125,000 that were awarded to the city. We had a very narrow window between October 6th and the deadline of October 14th. But we were able to pull information together. And I'd like to thank the department heads and particularly our special projects manager, Tammy Palmer, for their help with that. Last Thursday, we found out that we will be getting an additional $229,871.66 from the county under the CRF plan. So I certainly would like to take this opportunity publicly to thank the Board of Commissioners for giving the city the opportunity to submit additional requests. I also believe that Chief Ledwell had some information he'd like to share.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Just real briefly, we received through the Health Department this morning, just a minor change in what the CDC considers an exposure to the COVID virus. So whereas it used to be that if you spent 15 consecutive minutes within six feet of somebody without personal protective equipment, you were considered to be exposed, they changed that to a total of 15 minutes within a 24 hour period without PPE. So that it really mainly affects individuals that are within confined spaces over a long period of time, such as at the detention center and and facilities like that or care facilities. But I did want to bring that up because it was brought to our attention this morning. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Those for the good news and chief, thanks for sharing that update with us. We'll move on now to bids. We have two bids this evening. The first is a sole source procurement and purchase of replacement clarifier drives for the wastewater treatment plant. And for that, we'll go to Mr. Glass.
Yes, sir. The fiscal year 2021 sewer budget allocates funding the amount of $300,000 for the replacement of four clarifier control gates and two clarifier drive replacements. You may recall that we handled the clarifier control gates in a previous council meeting. So the drive record, yeah, drive mechanisms will will be requested in in this council meeting, but all are part of that $300,000. Much like the gates, this equipment is particular to the manufacturer of the clarifiers. That's EnviroDyne Systems of Camp Hill, Pennsylvania. And unfortunately, competitive bidding is not a viable option. But the good news is that our procurement code allows for sole source procurement in this circumstance. Again, the two drive mechanisms are exact replacement units and they're described in detail in the attached proposal. And of course, available through EnviroDyne Systems of Camp Hill, Pennsylvania. The cost of both drive mechanisms, including freight, is $98,820. And much like the control gates that I spoke of earlier, there will be an additional cost for the installation of those drives. Again, the total budget is $300,000 and that will encompass the purchase of the control gates, the clarifier drives and and their installation as well. So at this point, we would recommend that the mayor and common council approve the sole source procurement of two clarifier control drive mechanisms from EnviroDyne Systems of Zimmerman Drive in Camp Hill, Pennsylvania, a total amount of $98,820. I'll answer questions if there are any.
All right, thank you, Mr. Glass. Are there any questions for Mr. Glass on this? Do you have a motion?
No, Mr. President, I make a motion that we go ahead and accept that bid.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. There's been a motion by Mr. Dayhoff and a second by Mr. Cavaci to accept the bid. Is there any additional discussion or any for any questions? Very good. Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. Opinion of the chair, the ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it. And the bid is approved. There you go, Mr. Glass.
Thank you.
The next item is a replacement police vehicle. For that, we'll turn to Chief Ledwell. Chief.
Good evening, everyone. Again, on October 8th, Lieutenant Schuster was driving to work when he was involved in a vehicle collision, not his fault, which resulted in the total loss of his 2018 Ford Explorer all wheel drive vehicle. As a result, the city received an insurance check from the local government insurance trust for a total amount of $22,775. We looked at the Maryland State bid for a replacement Ford Explorer all wheel drive, which was 32,687. But there's currently a very extensive back order for these cruisers that would delay the replacement well into 2021. They did have one available vehicle, but it was equipped for patrol. Lieutenant Schuster is the Assistant Bureau Commander for CIB. So as a result, we did look at some alternatives for a similar type vehicle. We obtained three quotes from local dealerships for a 2020 Chevy Traverse all wheel drive. And as a result, we got a low bid of $32,159 from Coon Chevrolet of White Marsh. A budget amendment will be required to appropriate the additional difference in cost of $9,384 from our police capital projects fund. We are recommending that the common council approve the purchase of one 2020 Chevy Traverse all wheel drive from Coon Chevrolet of White Marsh for a total cost of $32,159.
All right, thank you, chief. May I have a motion on this bid?
I'll move to approve the bid, Mr. President.
Thank you, this is from Mr. Cavaci and a second from Ms. Gilbert. First, chief, is Lieutenant Schuster all right? Wasn't harmed?
He is. He was not injured, fortunately.
All right, very good. Glad to hear that. Is there any discussion on this or any questions for the chief? Chief, I just had one question. If Lieutenant wasn't at fault and the LGIT is only able to go up to a certain amount, is there any chance of recovering the difference from the from the other driver? Or is that not something that's possible?
Well, it involved a farm animal that got loose from a pen. And I believe the process, we we looked into that. I believe the process is that legit would have to submerge. If if they're successful in that, then they would receive reimbursement from the other party's insurance company.
Farm animal probably doesn't have any money anyway, I guess. All right, without me, if I don't hear any further discussion, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it. And the motion is adopted. Thank you, chief. We'll move on now to ordinances and resolutions. We have one ordinance for introduction tonight, ordinance number 928, and ordinance amending chapter seven, Boards and Commissions of the Code of the City of Westminster, Article One, Recreation and Advisory Parks Board, to revise the composition and duties of that board. And we'll go to Ms. Matthews for that. And I remind everybody that is for introduction tonight, not action. Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, President Pecoraro. As the mayor and common council are aware, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board was inactive for a number of years. And you're currently in the process of reconstituting the advisory board. In conjunction with your efforts, city staff and the city attorney reviewed the section of chapter seven, Boards and Commissions, which pertains to the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. Based on that review, we noted certain provisions of that section of the code that were rather outdated. And we also saw some opportunities to make some changes to provide for the more efficient operation of the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. The outcome of those efforts is ordinance number 928, which is before you this evening, as Council President Pecoraro noted for introduction. Either Ms. Levann or I would be happy to answer any questions you have about the red line copy of the ordinance that's in your agenda packet.
All right, thank you, Ms. Matthews. And before we do anything else, let's get a motion for introduction. May I have a motion for introduction of ordinance number 928?
I moved.
Been a motion by Mr. Yingling and Mr. Dayhoff. If I could take that as a second, I will do that. So been moved by Mr. Yingling and seconded by Mr. Dayhoff. Are there any questions for Ms. Matthews or Ms. Levann at this time? Or would anybody like to make any comments?
All right, Mr. President. I guess I'll just make one quick comment. I'm I'm excited about this board. I I think there's some good things that can help participate doing over the net, if being involved in over the next, you know, number of years. And I know some of the members that are going to be on it are outstanding folks. And I'm grateful, I'm sure as everyone else is, that they're willing to give of their time. And just wanted to express my appreciation for that. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. I think this is a, it'll be good to have some public engagement again to provide some advisory services to the department. And I think we're all looking forward to that. If no one has anything else, we'll move on to a vote on introduction. All those in favor of introduction of ordinance number 928, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it. And ordinance number 928 is introduced and we will bring it back at a future meeting for hearing, I guess, and further discussion. Thank you very much. There is no unfinished business of which I'm aware. And if no one else has any, we will move on to new business. We have several items under new business. The first is approval of Warner Construction Contract Change Order Number 14. Ms. Matthews.
Thank you again, President Pecoraro. This is change order number, I'm sorry, change order number 14 is proposed to the city's contractor, Warner Construction, the general contractor for the 45 West Main renovation project. It is comprised of five separate items that are delineated in the staff memo in your agenda packet. So in the interest of time, I won't walk through every single one of those. In a nutshell, these are either items that basically were originally intended to be reused and were found to be unable to do so due to their deteriorated condition. Or alternatively, these were items that essentially were revealed during the demolition process during construction. So unfortunately, these are five items that you really do not have any discretion on. They will need to be done for the sake of the project. In total, the five work items that comprise change order number 14 have a combined cost of $15,360.33. And I would note that change order number 14 will not change the contract time for completion. So that's a brief summary, but I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Matthews. May I have a motion on construction change order number 14?
I make a motion for the approval of change order number, where are we at? 15?
14.
14. Sorry, lost count.
That's all right. We'll probably get a 15 at some point. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
Hey, 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 easy, Mr. President. Let's keep, let's make this the last one.
Well, that would be my preference too, but I'm afraid that's, I think we got one more coming at least. So second from Mr. Cavaci. Is there any questions from Ms. Matthews or any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of approval of construction change order number 14, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Opinion of the chair, the ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it. And the change order is approved. Next is consideration of RFP number 25 projector screen for Warner Construction Contract. Ms. Matthews.
Thank you. This item was specifically separated out from change order number 14 because it certainly is something that is subject to the mayor and common councils discretion. City staff through the project architect, Gamp Burnet Architects, requested pricing to provide and install a power operated flush mount projector screen in the multipurpose room. 006, for those of you who I know have toured the building, this is the large sort of general training room that is near the restrooms in the basement level of the building. This projector screen was not included in the design documents. If the mayor and common council choose to move forward with RFP number 25, it has an associated cost of $3,614.10 and from a processing implement would be rolled into change order number 14. Once again, there would be no change in the contract completion time for this item.
All right, thank you. Is, may I have a motion on this? All right, no motion at all?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Yingling.
This is, this is for the multipurpose room in the basement. Is that right?
That is correct. Councilmember Yingling, it's basically going to be used as a general staff training room. Unfortunately, Mr. Davidson was unable to be on the call because there's an issue with the 911. the nine-one-one um, a system over at the police department, so that's why he is not on the call, but this was something, I think, to improve the functionality of that space. Obviously, if it's being used as a training room, it would be helpful to have some type of projector screen or visuals.
This is not a time-sensitive uh decision?
It somewhat is, that's the only reason we're bringing it forward. My approach and with the architect and with the contractors to try to get as many discretionary items as we can priced and bring them forward to you all at one time, you'll see quite a few of those, I believe, at the na- on November ninth. Um, this particular item, if it's something we choose to go forward with, uh, we should make a decision before Warner Construction starts actually closing up the ceilings. That's why this item has been separated out from the other items that you'll be considering on November ninth.
All right. Any other questions from Ms. Matthews?
So was there, I'm sorry, I'm not, I guess I'm I'm not too tech-savvy on large-screen projectors or units. I'm just kind of amazed at the price that we didn't, did we price this out with any other company or person or to do it later? Why do we need to do it now?
And as I understand it, uh, Councilmember Gilbert, and like, once again, I apologize, I had assumed Mr. Davidson would be on the call, um, I'm sure he did as well. The issue is because of, if they, once they close in the ceiling, I think it has something to do with the mechanics of how it is installed. Mr. Davidson worked directly with the architect um and with the vendor to describe what his needs are.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Dehoff?
And I think this is a question for the mayor. Isn't this antiquated technology? I'm not really seeing or reading or hearing much about projection screens being installed these days. It's more going towards um uh flat panel, um, flat panel monitors. Mr. Mayor?
It it comes down to size, so if um they're, they're, I mean, they definitely have a place for sure, and then their places and how large is, I mean, they don't have TVs that are fifty-four inch, ninety-six inches, they do, um, but they're a lot more than this projector screen. And what projector screens allow you to do is the projector screen, if you take good care of it, lasts a very, very long time. And when you, you know, you can, you can replace projectors as technology changes uh faster um than you can the, you know, I mean, than like a, like a TV. But I mean, these things last a long time anyway, you don't need the latest and greatest typically for this type of uh use, um, unless you're really, you really want crisp explosions in your action movies, um, it doesn't really, you know, it doesn't really make that much of a difference, but with this, it just comes down to the size, I mean, ninety-six inches is big, so um a projection screen is the appropriate um, you know, thing here, because you know, the larger the room, the bigger it needs to be, and um everyone can't sit in the front row, but um, so in terms of that, they're rare. People still put them in their basements when they put in theaters and stuff all the time, though, and uh they have really high-quality projectors that work well with high-quality screens. So the problem is, when you get that big, if you don't have a high-quality screen, this might answer some other questions too. The, you know, the the video just doesn't, doesn't, doesn't look well, and if you're using it for training, there might be um text, things like that, that people need to read, so it needs to be big, and it probably needs to be pretty high-quality, so um, it, I mean, it's an expensive um projector screen, but at that size, um, it's probably what you need. I'm not, I'm not a expert in projector screens, um, but I I've just told you everything that I know about them, so that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was wondering along those lines, uh, and I know that, you know, a um, you know, for convenience, um, you know, there's a lot, there, you know, certainly some value to uh, you know, having a um, you know, a powered screen. Uh, is there much of a price differential with a screen that would be installed that would have to be um, you know, pulled down manually, and does that represent a significant savings for us? And I know that we're, you know, as we get towards the end of the project, you know, people are getting um, you know, concerned that we uh, we watch the, you know, the nickels and dimes on this.
Yeah, I apologize, President Pecorera, that was not something we priced, so I don't know whether there would be a significant cost difference or not.
Mr. President, I have one more question.
Go ahead, Ms. Gilbert.
Yes, this goes to to the projected use or the current use. So Ms. Matthews, do we currently have a room with a screen that's being used for training purposes now? And if so, do we use it a lot, and would we benefit from? And you, out of the use and the cost over a screen this large?
We do not have anything um that is certainly this large, because we don't really have any dedicated training room space. Probably the closest that we have, and I think this will probably ring a bell with those who are on the finance committee, is we do have um kind of a projector system that's in the second-floor conference room that we use sometimes, particularly during budget time with the finance committee. Um, but it's just projected on a wall. We do not currently have a training room.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mr. Mayor?
To answer, um, uh, I don't have a, I don't have the answers for for uh Ms. Gilbert, but uh for your concern about the uh, the screens you pull down, when you did a quality screen, the difference in cost between the motorized and the pulldowns really isn't as big. Um, you might, it might be like the high two thousands, um, you don't say that much, I mean, it gives, most of it's the quality of the screen itself, there's a price difference, but it's not um, it's not like the majority of the cost or anything, if that helps anybody.
Thank you, that's good to know. What about, what about the projector system itself? Is that going to be a separate item, Ms. Matthews? Is that, or is that something that's already included somewhere? So I think, yeah, I think it would be good to know what what was gonna be happening with that, because, you know, I imagine that'll have to be installed as well.
With the best of my knowledge, Council President Pecorera, like I say, Mr. Davidson worked directly um on this item. I believe this is a full system.
A full system?
That is my understanding.
Oh, all right, well, that's a, that's, that's valuable information, because, you know, it seemed like a lot of money for just a screen.
Yeah, I was.
No, no, I'm sorry, this is actually, um, I believe it's everything, but if you all would like, I can certainly text Mr. Davidson and see if he has some availability, if you want to move on to another item and see if he's able to join the call, he certainly is gonna be able to answer many of the questions that you all have posed.
Okay.
But Mr. Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaci?
So I was about to weigh in before that question was asked. I'm on Amazon right now, looking at fifty-four by ninety-six pulldown projector screens, and they're about two hundred dollars. Um, I'm seeing an electric one here for three hundred, you know, two, three hundred bucks, and these look like, you know, at least decent screens, um, not three thousand dollars. So if it does include the projector and all the other stuff, that, that's, then that's a different conversation, but there's absolutely no way it, from what I'm seeing, we should be spending three thousand dollars on a screen by itself.
If you all would like, stop my video and go look at the actual backup to this item. You wanna hold on a moment?
All right, sure. I was, yeah, I was just looking through it, I'm not sure um what, what it includes, just from what I've read it in here. All right, well, why don't we um allow Ms. Matthews to take a look at that, and also to um, you know, reach out to uh Mr. Davidson and see if she can gather any additional information on that. And uh, while she's doing that, um, why don't we skip the item C, come back to her for that in a minute, we'll move on to the next two items. And take these together, these are two appointments, and let me just say that um, the uh D is really a appointed by the mayor, and uh E is um consultation with the mayor, uh by the council president, the mayor and I discussed these both, and so just present them to you uh together. Uh, we'd like to uh propose that uh Councilmember uh Dehoff be the council liaison to the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. It seems to make a lot of sense with him as the chair of the committee, and um, you will, uh, will help keep uh, you know, the council committee in line with the advisory board and vice versa, and I think that's a, you know, a good thing where we can do that. I'd like to appoint uh to the uh new technology committee that the council approved a couple of meetings ago, uh, Mr. Cavaci as a member and myself as chair. So, like to have a motion to approve the appointments?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Yingling, is there a second?
Second.
The second from Ms. Gilbert. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it. There we go. Mr. Cavaci, you have a motion uh for the closed session?
I do, Mr. President. So, under the statutory authority to close session relating annotated code, general provisions three dash three oh five B, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has junk jurisdiction or any other personnel matters that affects one or more specific individuals, to consider the acquisition of real property for public purpose and matters directly related uh there to, to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, and to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. Uh, so, under those, that's statutory authority, Mr. President, I would like to move that we go into closed session uh immediately following this meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Is there a second to Mr. Cavaci's motion?
Second.
And the second from Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say, opposed say nay, the ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and so we will move into a closed session at the conclusion of the regular meeting. Ms. Matthews, are you prepared to uh discuss the uh contract for the community survey related to water reuse initiative? I think she's almost be trying to reach Mr. Davidson.
Is it, is it possible, Miss, Mr. President, that?
I'll push you back. I'm sorry?
Never mind.
All right, good, Ms. Matthews, thank you.
Yeah, um, I have texted Mr. Davidson to see if he's able to call in, obviously, if he's still working on the nine-one-one system, that will not be doable.
Right.
Um, if you're ready, Council President Pecorera, we'll go ahead and just deal with the community survey.
Please do.
Okay, thank you. Um, as the mayor and council are aware, the city um a little over a year ago retained Katz and Associates out of San Diego to be our communications consultant on the water reuse initiative. As Mr. Glass and I have worked with the firm to develop the components of our community outreach plan, um, I think we all unanimously agreed that having a quantitative survey would be beneficial in guiding our education efforts. They have subsequently reached out to the National Research Center to obtain a proposal for such a survey. National Research Center may sound familiar to you all, um, they are the firm that conducted the city's community survey back in two thousand nineteen. Um, included in your agenda packet is a proposal from N R C. Um, as you probably noted, they provided pricing for surveys of varying length and methodologies. The development of the proposed survey will be an iterative process between N R C, Katz and Associates, and city staff. Therefore, staff is not recommending this evening that the city contract for a specific survey option, but rather that the mayor and common council authorize a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. That is the most costly option of those reflected in N R C's proposal, they all sort of hovered somewhere um in the twenty-four thousand dollar range. From a budgetary standpoint, the F Y twenty-twenty-one Water Fund budget includes two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the city's water reuse initiative. Um, of this amount, approximately twenty thousand dollars has been expended to date for services provided by Watech Engineering and Katz and Associates. I did want to note that there will be additional expenses for the services of those firms during this fiscal year. The mayor and common council also recently approved um the Cranberry Reservoir Study, which you authorized on September twenty-eighth. And I would also note that there will be expenses for laboratory services and pilot testing equipment, um, which have not yet been determined, but will also be charged to the same project budget. I think Mr. Glass and I both wanted to bring to your attention this evening that it's unclear at this time whether the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated in the budget, um, whether that will be sufficient or not. Some of the costs that related to our water reuse initiative will be reimbursable through the United States Bureau of Reclamation grant award that Mr. Glass spearheaded. But at this point, there is a lot that's unknown about the water reuse initiative, as you all know. Um, I think I would like to see if Mr. Glass had any um comments that he would like to offer this evening. He's an integral part of this project as well.
So, um, of course, uh, Ms. Matthews and I had spoken about this uh on a number of occasions, we had uh um Zoom meetings as well with uh with Katz and Associates and and so the uh overwhelming majority was uh was to handle the the survey in this manner. We had uh had worked with uh this company on the, on the previous survey as well, so I'm in full support.
And with that, I think I'd be happy to answer any questions if you um have any questions about the methodology or the survey, or how that will be handled.
Do we need a motion?
Greg's on mute.
Mr. President, you're muted, or we can't hear you.
I apologize, thank you, yes, we need a motion.
Motion approved.
Please.
I'll, I'll make that motion, or let, 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 let Mr. Yingling do it.
All right, thank you, we have a motion for Mr. Yingling, and a second for Mr. Dehoff uh to approve this item, all those, any further discussion or any questions? All right, then we'll move on. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the uh motion is approved. And I believe Mr. Davidson is on now?
That's correct.
All right, great, and we can move to Mr. Davidson, I know we've all been Googling away, I uh, I took a look, I see that just the item itself sells for about twenty-two hundred dollars, uh, I'm sure there's construction costs and other things involved, um, you know, for this particular item, um, but we can let Mr. Davidson explain it to us and ask him any questions we have. Thank you, Mr. Davidson, and sorry to interrupt your work on the nine-one-one line.
No problem. So the projector, projector screen being proposed is for room zero zero six, which is the multipurpose training room. It's a ceiling-mounted uh screen that'll uh come down out of the ceiling. The ceiling in the multipurpose training room's only eight foot tall, so that's why it's up in, inside the ceiling. This is a powered screen, so it's probably why it adds a little extra cost to it also.
All right. And uh, any questions for Mr. Davidson?
So, Mr. President, but, but, so Mr. Davidson, it's just the screen, not the projector?
That is correct, it's just a screen only.
And what are we gonna do about the projector then? Is that gonna be a separate uh item that we'll be seeing, or is it already included somewhere?
Some of the projectors will be taken from the, our current location and used over there.
Oh, okay. Good, so we won't have a cost to that. All right. All right, any other questions for Mr. Davidson?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
So, Councilman Cavaci found some, some um, some projector screens online for like a fraction of the cost. I don't know a lot about projectors, I'm sure there's a notable difference, but I don't know what it is. I think we, I, I think, I think everybody would probably like to hear, you know, what makes like a, the difference between a three thousand dollar projector and a three hundred dollar projector screen?
I, I concur, because I certainly won't be voting for a three thousand dollar projector screen at this moment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Davidson?
Unfortunately, I don't have the, yeah, I don't have the paperwork in front of us, but for the power, I believe it in the quote, if you look, I think it's times two. One is for in the public meeting room, and one is for in, within the uh multipurpose training room.
So this is two, this is two screens?
If you, I mean, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but if you look on the quote, I think it says times two. I may be misspoken here.
All right, Mr. President?
Mr. Yingling?
Okay, so we're debating this projector screen, any, any chance we can just table this for like the next meeting, so we can do more?
That would be, that would be fine with me, except that I think that Ms. Matthews says that there's some That would be, that would be fine with me, except that I think that Ms. Matthews says that there's some need to do this now in order to be able to, you know, manage to get this on, you know, in the work schedule. Ms. Matthews, are you, are you able to give us a couple of weeks to take a look at this?
I think we may need to do it sooner than that, but certainly Council President Pecoraro, Mr. Davidson, and I are both, I'm having trouble loading the detail on my computer for whatever reason. I, I think, as you and the mayor and I discussed earlier today, there may be an item that may necessitate a meeting later this week related to the project.
All right.
But I would certainly suggest that you give Mr. Davidson and I a chance to basically get up to speed on all the details. I apologize this evening that we're having so much difficulty providing you with the information that you need.
That's all right. Sometimes it takes a while to get these things, and we know Mr. Davidson is engaged in an important task, so let's prefer this. Ms. Gilbert?
Um, on the change order request from M and B Contract, it says furnish and install one DA light advantage electrical projection screen. It doesn't say two, it says one.
That's what I see. Let's defer this, if that's acceptable to everybody, till this, yeah, as Ms. Matthews noted, we may have to invite you all to a special meeting in order to consider another item, and we'll be able to discuss it at that time. So let's, unless anybody objects, we will postpone this item until that time. You have no objection? We'll move on and do that. And that concludes the new business on the agenda. We'll move on now to departmental reports. Ms. Matthews?
I'd like to start with maybe giving Councilmember Dehoff the opportunity to share any information he would like for the Westminster Volunteer Fire Department.
Uh, no report, Ms. Matthews. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we'll just go around the screen. Mr. Glass?
So the only thing I have to share is that on the sixteenth of November is when CJ Miller will be back in town to start the annual paving project. They will start in town in about, around where the, the street department is and police department is located. So we look forward to that, and of course, there'll probably be a little bit of traffic back up. That always happens, but once that's done, then we'll have complaints for speeders, and then once that's done, everything should be returned to normal. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Chief Ledwell?
Evening again. I guess to start off, I'll, I'll follow up on what the mayor and Councilman Cavaci spoke to earlier. Unfortunately, we are investigating a homicide that occurred on Saturday evening at about nine-thirty PM on South Bishop Street. Tragically, twenty-three-year-old Devin Rainey lost his life in this incident. It appears that the incident stemmed from a dispute between members of neighboring households. We are making sure that we conduct a very thorough investigation. We're doing so now. We are working in collaboration with the state's attorney's office, and we are receiving support from our neighboring law enforcement agencies. We're asking anybody who may have witnessed the incident or any part of the incident, or even if you saw anything that you would consider suspicious in the area of South Bishop Street on Saturday evening, to please give us a call on the non-emergency line. It's on our website. You can also send us a confidential text. The, the information is also on the website, but if you want to note it now, it's eight four seven four one one, eight four seven four one one, and your keyword is tip WPD. Anybody can give information anonymously if you choose to do so. Just contact us via one of those methods. As Councilman Cavaci also mentioned, we are starting this week. We get two of our instructors trained. They call it train the trainer on the active bystandership for law enforcement. It's being taught by the Georgetown Law's Innovative Policing Program. I've been told by Captain Yor that the, the instructor list there, and she's one of the participants, is extremely impressive, so we're hoping to get some good things out of this training program and pass it along to all of our folks here. Also, along those lines, we are at a point in the work group for Carroll County, the law enforcement leaders, in our draft use-of-force policy revisions that we're going to be reaching out to within our police department, the Public Safety Advisory Committee, the citizens assigned to that committee, presenting the draft and getting feedback, comments, questions from them. Countywide, the work group is looking at presenting it to a number of individuals and potentially some groups of citizens for feedback. So we're, we're at that juncture with that project. Along more positive notes, this week, we promoted, following a competitive promotional process, Officer Michelle Donovan to the rank of sergeant. We felt a vacancy for a few months at that position, so we made that promotion this week. And that's all that I would have for tonight.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Davidson, are you still on the line?
I am. My service is pretty poor. I'm on the side of the road. I have nothing to further report. The nine-one-one system is back up and working. So we'll keep an eye on it.
Thank you. Ms. Gruber?
Good evening. Since our last council meeting, I'm sure that you have noticed almost thirty square crows currently line Main Street. These festive creations will remain on display until November second. Interested participants are invited to engage in an interactive scavenger hunt that will help them explore all of the creations. And completed scavenger hunts can be turned into the Recreation and Parks Department for a chance to win a prize. Also, on October twenty-second at nine AM, staff along with Panoni and Associates held the kickoff meeting for the Parkmaster Planning Services for Wakefield Valley, and we were able to set a schedule for progress on that particular project, and we will be shortly announcing when public input opportunities will be available for that project. As Councilman Dehoff noted, on Saturday, October twenty-fourth, we had an overwhelming response to our spooky Saturday drive-through Halloween event. We wanted it to be well-attended, and it sure was, so we actually had to block roads and turn cars away, which is never what we want to do. But in our current situation with trying to create safe and COVID compliant events, we are limited in our capacity to serve people. Most everything, as you know, that we're doing right now is in a drive-through format, and you can only process so many cars and so many people in a certain amount of time. This was a three-hour event, and thanks to a very dedicated streets and recreation department and police department, we were able to process almost five hundred people in that amount of time. So that's pretty impressive when you consider the amount of activities that each child or family or vehicle was able to engage in. So we were certainly proud of that event. We did have some unhappy people that were not able to participate, however. Today was an exciting evening at the Family Fitness Center. Mobilization and demolition began on the shower rooms. The demolition phase of this project will happen overnight while the center is closed to the public to allow for appropriate ventilation for this construction crew that's working in there. Once the demolition phase is complete, the construction phase will be accomplished during regular business hours. At this point, it's anticipated that the total time for completion of renovations will take just under two months. Additionally, staff will begin working with RG Pool Consulting to develop bid specifications for our pool renovations project. As we are just now endeavoring into the development of bid specifications for the renovations, I would have to predict that it's highly unlikely that the renovations will be accomplished to completion to open on time for the two thousand twenty-one pool season. And lastly, tomorrow morning at ten AM, we will hold a pre-bid meeting for the playground equipment upgrades for To Home a Farm Boulder Park. And we are excited to be removing the man-made boulders that have been out there for quite some time that have begun to deteriorate, so we're looking to put some innovative new equipment in out there and to collect all kinds of great designs from vendors that hopefully will be attending that meeting tomorrow. And that completes my report, unless anyone has questions.
Ms. Matthews, if I may. So, Ms. Gruber, I've known you a long time, long before you came to the city. We worked together, county, and I know that you will tend to focus probably on the fact that some people didn't get to attend that event, and that, and I know how, how much that probably bothers you, because I know you. But from what I understand, it was unbelievable, yeah, the, the amount of folks that you did process was pretty amazing. And I know it wasn't just you and your staff in the streets, and PD were out there. It was awesome. I was seeing some, some of the, you know, what the guys were doing, obviously, because I live right here, and it was very impressive. I will also tell you that there is no question, we're going to have tenfold the demand for the Christmas event. I, I'm already hearing people talk about it. I, I can't tell you how many folks are excited about it. It's going to be huge. So it's a, it's a really great idea. I think it's so cool what you guys are doing, and I, I just wanted to compliment you, so thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Deepa?
You're going to need a bigger parking lot, I think, for Christmas.
I agree.
Mr. Deepa?
Thank you. The border zoning appeals will meet on November third, and they have one application. It's a special exception for a distillery at one sixteen to one eighteen East Main Street. The Historic District Commission has nothing on their agenda for this month, for November, and the Planning Commission on November twelfth will hear a request by Stonegate for an upward adjustment of twenty percent for building permits. You may be aware that subdivision of development is limited to forty building permits a year. They are asking for a twenty percent increase, so an additional eight building permits for this year. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Deepa. Ms. Colston?
Thank you, Barbara, and good evening, Council President and Council members. I don't have a lot for this report, but I did want to highlight that we are about a quarter of the way through the year, and with that being said, with the general fund, our current expenditures for the year are at about sixteen percent, so that's looking good. Other than that, we are wrapping up the audit with the audit team, which is going well, and that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you. As Council President Pecoraro mentioned, there may be an issue involving forty-five West Main that may necessitate a special meeting due to timeliness reasons. I see that Mr. Dick is still on the meeting. John, would you mind kind of providing just a brief summary of the sidewalk issue, since you had dealt directly with the architect in terms of getting pricing for that item?
Oh, yes, well, it's the side of the building that currently has the BBNT ATM in it. We had a drain there, had to be replaced, and they dug that up. So when they dug that up, they took probably about a fifteen-foot piece of sidewalk out. At the same time, it comes back, we had some water infiltration in the basement, so they were trying to figure out where that was getting in. So a little farther down, they ripped another section, did some waterproofing. As we started to look, now we've ripped out all the sidewalk, except for about, I'm going to say about thirty feet. It probably is, it's less than that maybe as well, but anyhow, it just kind of makes sense, instead of pouring new concrete sidewalk and curb for, you know, seventy percent of a sidewalk, because it's all damaged, there's, the curb's all banged up from thirty years of people running over it to go into the ATM. It just kind of makes sense to, you know, get a price for those five or six squares and just replace it all and have it look nice.
All right. Thank you, Dick. Were they able to deal effectively with the, with the water damage and the drainage problem?
Um, so they uncovered some things. When they dug up the pipe and replaced the section of pipe, there was a, it was sheared near the wall, so we're hoping that it was like that before, before they dug down to it. It was kind of hard to tell. We knew that water, one of the pipes was broken there. There was two, a sump pump pipe and a drain pipe. So that's what was being dug out, and then with the additional waterproofing of the wall, we're starting to run out of what could be causing the water to come in, in the building. We feel that sump pump running and leaking down along the foundation is probably a pretty good sign of where the water was coming from, so you know, as it stands now with the, all the additional waterproofing done and the pipe fixing, we should be hopefully.
That's not a solid yes.
So you know what happens when I say yes then, right? Yeah, so there are the two sources of water can come from. So if we look at these two sources and we fixed them and we waterproofed, yes, it should be fixed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dick.
Yep.
Thank you, President Pecoraro. I think that concludes staff's reports for this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Are there questions on anything before we move off of this subject? Okay, well, thank you. Well, that brings us to the, the conclusion of the meeting. The final item on our agenda is citizens' comments. In normal circumstances, we invite the public at this time to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. Because it's difficult to allow live comments online during these meetings, as we're doing them, we have asked people to, you know, send comments to our city clerk at comments@westgov.com if they wish to comment on anything during the meetings, and at this time in every meeting, I will read out all of the comments we have received. We have received no comments since the last meeting, so we will stay tuned and see if anybody has anything the next time, but please, we welcome comments and are happy to read them and share them publicly. And that concludes our agenda and the meeting, and without objection, we are adjourned until the, you know, closed meeting in a few minutes, and after that, until our next meeting in two weeks. Thank you all very much. Please stay safe.